Yes, I just I recorded that we stayed after about nine months, I was finally appointed financial administrator for us and he's here to my Jim Moore and I asked him to come so that he could introduce himself. We we've been working very closely with the department over the last couple of months, the compile everything Jim's gonna need to to review where we are with the financial plan. Jim and I are meeting with PD tomorrow. They they sent over a bunch of documents today, so it sounds like they're they're ready to move as well. And so I know he's excited to get on board and get things going, so.
Well, yes, thank you very much. It's an honor to serve the district. Some of you know that I've been around a while. I think it was late in 2009 when Dr. Adams asked me to serve on the financial advisory committee. Brian came along as the controller in 2015. And so it's been a great experience for me to be part of this process of, we had some pretty tough meetings and Brian were part of them. And I actually came to the board a few times and the only face that I remember is this good looking guy over here. Everybody else is new, but I know you've gone through some really, made some very important decisions. And it's an honor to be part of this process because I think your decisions have been solid. And you'll have no greater advocate than me for the district. For a couple of reasons. First of all, my wife graduated from Strong Vincent in 69. She reminds me that every day. And our chairman, Tom Hagan, who you might heard his name, graduated from Strong Vincent in, I think, 53. And I'm from Corey. I'm a Corey guy, who's been very fortunate over the years. Brian and I have a common background in public accounting and then he went the the nonprofit route, I guess, say, and I went profit route, which for two years was nonprofit. But I got in the industry in the last 50 years, but it's, I've been so blessed with so many people helping me to train people, help others. And when I was asked to submit my name in 2016 for this job, I said, I have a full time job. And then I was asked to do it again a few months ago, I think it was actually, he called me in December. And I said, I have a full time job, supposed to be retired, but I have a full time job. But I, you've come along so far. You made so much progress that I want to be a part of this. As you exit the financial watch, Dr. Wilkman at the Department of Education, correct me if I'm wrong, told us that there's no school district in Pennsylvania that has ever gotten out of the watch. And so we're gonna be the first, I'm convinced, based on the numbers that I've seen. And so what I want to do is to work with you. And I'm gonna, I have my card, you can call me if you want, whatever, but I want to work with you and obviously the the staff here of the district. And with PFM and with the department. And and answer any questions. I want to be totally objective, but I don't want to belabor this because I know it's been, you've done a lot of good stuff. And I've been part, at least I've seen a lot of it. And I mean, I just read the article by Leatrick. Is that Leatrick? I just read your article. What a great article. I mean, that, I don't know if anybody's seen it, but that's exactly how I feel. About the tax increase, about where you've been, what our goals are. And I also have a another reason, obviously, for the success of the district is I serve as Chair of the United Lake. And we've invested, we have 13 community schools now in the district. And I I see it every day, the success that we have seen in the community schools overcoming obstacles, overcoming barriers. So it's just a great opportunity for me to be part of this process and work with you. So I'm gonna work hard, maybe kind of be part time, just because I have the other job. But I don't think it's gonna take a long time to get get to where we need to be. But I appreciate your article because I thought it was really well stated. So please call me if you have any questions, you'd like to talk privately at any time. I'm gonna leave before you get in, obviously, into your board meeting, but Brian and I both thought it would be a good idea to to meet. And you can you can trust me that I'll be objective, I'll be transparent, I'll communicate, and I'm your editor. So we're gonna get this done. And so congratulations to where you are right now. It was great to see the governor here Monday. Looks like Neil had a tough day. But it was it was really neat to see that this process in this district really turn around. And Cinder Wong, who I was with today, is very, very happy as well to see this process. So are there any questions that you might have to make?
At all? What happens to the school districts that don't get out of the, the state take over?
Not really. I think it's pretty much
Just to stay in watch for a two week.
And how many are there?
I think we have about seven school districts.
Out of like 400 or 500?
I think Redding is one of them, but I think I'm aware of. Are there others?
So we want to move decisively out of the bottom 1%, I think.
Yeah.
Modest objective and.
Yeah. So it surprised me to hear that also. So we're having a meeting, another meeting tomorrow. And as I said, there's a lot of stuff being sent my way. I'm gonna try to digest it as quickly as possible. Brian and I met on Monday to go through some information. No surprises at all at this point. I just want to, again, I want to do my job in an objective, fair, transparent way. And so I guess eventually I have to sign on the dotted line. And but I want to do that sooner than later, so so we can get on the other side of this.
And then because we're the first district to ever come out, this is a test case for the department as well. They've been working hard on developing a whole process. Because they do, there's a couple others that are in watch now with the additional funding that they think should be able to get out in the next couple of years. So we want to design this process with us if we go through it.
Yeah, I got this sense from the department that they're anxious for us to proceed and move in this direction. So I think we'll get nothing but cooperation with them as well. So I've got a lot to do, but I'll get it done. In the meantime, if there's something on your mind that you'd like to talk to me about. If it's okay with Brian, maybe I just pass out my card. My email's on there. Give me a shout if you have a question. Fair enough? Thank you for this opportunity. And say a little prayer also. Thanks to everybody. We're gonna get through this. Thank you.
Next item, I have an item that's not on the agenda tonight. We have actually, Ash Wright is here tonight. He's been working with Sherry to, we'd like to partner with him on a program for our guidance department. And I think Sherry will introduce him.
Great evening, everyone. Cass Wright is here tonight. We are meeting to partner with him on his college and career readiness program. And so I'm just gonna sort of turn it over to him. He's gonna talk a little bit about the academy program and he'll be honest about it. If you have any questions, you're more than welcome to ask. Hey, Cass.
Everyone, thank you. Once again, I'm Cass Wright, and I'm a youth worker district community, you all know. And that's the district I went back to my first love, which is assisting young people, paying their loans, paying full secondary education. But what I want to share with you all, as I talk about the program, is the outcomes that we have achieved. These particular outcomes that I'm going to review with you all can be duplicated in any district as long as we have access to students. And the program is a K-20 platform, first of its kind. Which means we take students from early kindergarten all the way through the 12th grade, we track them from their full secondary experience, and then bring them back home with one opportunity. We're also in the process of looking at two locations, one on the north side and also one on the east side to build college facilities, so students can have a place to come to on your ground and do college inquiry. This is gonna be saturated with data, computer software, and we we partner with some big companies and organizations, which I'll order a little bit later. The way she's seeing here is that the data from the outcomes, our data is based on track students based on ethnicity, at the top percentage of completion. And also we track them based on mail and emails. And you can see that the column over here and come over here is where the students went to. We had 3,545 students receive the first first round of the program. We want 3,545, so we have over 2,900 now. And we are in the process of looking up to about many students from across the country in the platform. But every one of our students has a place to go at the end of the year. So rather than being speechable and practical, have they using that the rare technical military and also work for it. And you will see on the right now over here how many students think about the most bigger locations. And because we had these students, and these students were in middle school. They learned everything that they needed to learn about full secondary education. From sixth grade through 11th grade, by the end of their junior year of high school, they've already achieved SAT and A's and B's score. Our student athletes was clear for the NCBA. So pretty much all we had to do was help them apply to various institutions. So out of their 3,545, 2,275 applying to four-year institutions, career schools, and out of that 2,424 second. We focused on urban, rural, community. A lot of times, the urban students are getting the best support, but I just felt that we needed to change the whole process and make sure that they had the opportunity. Going on students, students in the community school district, thinking of $15,000 to go to full secondary. The Erie County as a whole returned $214 million last year because of financial aid kids didn't apply. And and that said, and I'm dealing with some kids in Erie School District right now, they can't even go to school because they came for the tuition deposit or the housing deposit, and they just don't have the gas, your air, so that's it. And so 2,650,000 was going home, 2,981 was for the generation. In our system, we have 57 staff members, all that have participated at the college level, high school level. And with that said, they have access to these staff members that's not blocking that. And also, we do webinars with the students. They can interact via audio. So we build platforms and do we upload the K-12 curriculum. And every student has a separate program to ask them from year to year, following through the program. So we also have ACT and AAT prep in there. We have a separate portal for student athletes to learn about the NCAA division 1, 2 degree, I would mean two athletes from the Erie School District that may not have. And this is just not Erie School District, not Erie School District. This is part all over. These students just just not the support that they need. These students are pretty good students. And they might have gone to the grade because they never did the parent house. And that's what we got intently in these proceedings. Then our financial aid outcomes, we moved all areas, there are students. And we were at 3,545 students. We did over $187 million in scholarships to state as early students. So we made sure that we do all the financial aid as well, so we can develop state, all the student loans, collegeware centering, subsidy, non subsidy, back private loans. But here, the big thing right here, we save these students over $1 million. We college education fees, saving over $1 million in tuition fees. And also those students that come along campus, which they know about a million. Our students receive $31 million in full year academic scholarships. Our students wanting community college, $70 million. Our students that went on to play sports at Division 1, Division 2 level, received over $14 million. And our students that didn't play at Division 1, 2, 3 level, went on to a NII school and then received another eight years. So my number one goal, if we are a department, is to make sure that we turn around this process into a school. Unfortunately, broken here and it's broken in a lot of places. And students are just not getting help if they need it. Any questions?
Do you know what the college division rating is at?
I know when I looked at that online, they had to go on to C-Mines for college programs. Those are C-Mines and on financial release standpoint, I have another slide I can actually show you number. And since that Erie High School graduate class, I think students, only 100 students would give the license. And even if they completely passed it, they haven't done state grant, they haven't done work study, they haven't done a student loan process. So a lot of kids will walk in there with these doors, thinking that they're going. Reality is, when they get the campus, they're gonna be sent back home. They have the money, colleges and universities are not tenants. We're doing that process. They send you to the financial aid office. You don't want to do paperwork, you don't want to do that.
I think you quoted a figure earlier about the amount of the financial aid that's returned. Is that coming from the this, these dollar amounts here?
Oh, these are secure funds, funds that will return, I think, to the amount of seeds you had at Erie High and also at Collegiate Academy. Now, the numbers that Collegiate Academy were looking at, but they went great.
I have a comment and a question. So I mean, I've worked with Cass directly, like speaking at my son's roommate, a collegiate graduate got himself into this situation last year. Couldn't afford his tuition. I called Cass and Cass, I watched that process play. I can see to how that works. My question may be those from his creator. How does this work with our state council? So maybe we're not gonna get the names of the department, but how would this program work with our councilors and kind of when they're regulated?
The goal is to train them, and with platform, they have been engaged in this whole process from beginning and have been monitored. These students through the platform for every lesson and every process. How does it work with non-alien sessions? Isn't that a similar application with collegiate?
Yeah, I can, I can explain. And non-alien is a very good program. It can be more research. It is not a good program for students that come from urban and rural communities, because we traditionally do not have a background of political knowledge, daddy, or college career school. With the non-alien program, you build accomplishments, you search schools, you compare schools with someone to someone. But there's no starting point. There's no support throughout the process. And and students just, and my kids actually have the platform. And they present the platform. And then the other thing is, check the math. Their platform is aligned with the state standards of Pennsylvania. I'm having meetings with the state coming up here pretty soon. And it's an overall process that actually have outcomes. And the thing about this platform as a board member or a principal or counselor, you just don't turn key to lotion, so you really won't have to do anything but monitor, run your state reports. And then shoot out your reports. It also shoots out the line of the Pennsylvania state's banners for college and career readiness as well. And so the counselors' role with this is pretty much to monitor because they so busy. Our team actually, I'm saying, last month, I meet with the kids that grade above once a month for one hour. And then, of course, they have the support of the webinar staff. We also have financial aid staff onboard, college admissions staff onboard. It's really a full, long program. And I apologize, I can't show you all the system, but anyone that's interested in seeing the platform and have access to the platform will be great.
Cass, can you talk a little bit about the involvement for the portal for the parents and how we engage with that?
Yes. So with the platform, every student that creates an account, we create all accounts, do a single sign-on, runs the certify. So we create every student count. And what I mean by that, when one student creates an account, there actually be four accounts. So you get two mentor account, a parent account. So I'm sorry, two parent accounts, a mentor account and a student account. And when they send an invitation to their parents with mentor, the parents will sign onboard and actually can view what the student is doing in the platform. Parents are notified when the kid's falling off. So if the kid missed five assignments, for instance, if a lot in the system, they have to see a school counselor, but the parents are already notified that kid has been falling apart. Some of our school districts are using this platform as an incentive, in which the kids can get a half credit per semester to complete the platform. Which is important because the incentivize to get to get on there. And then, here they're seeing here, like I said, they get a ton of money because they are in the center of low income. And when COVID hit, some students that weren't even low income are now low income because the parents have lost time on their job. And that's gonna take place over the next few years. So it's actually perfect timing.
Well. 80% of colleges have moved away. They've gone test blind or test optional or SAT, ACT, et cetera. What after adaptations have you incorporated or have you noticed to be worthwhile in still providing pathways or monitoring pathways for students?
Well, even though majority of colleges and universities have launched as option, COVID students are still required as placement reasons to see what English, math, social science, social studies, diet courses, the page again. But then the platform, we have a whole section on that. When you're researching your school, we start educating research institutions in eighth and ninth grade. So they know everything about that institution, including what type of sport they need, because not every school participated in test option. Some onboard, that's the T and A T. But the NCAA, which I want to be leaving to go again, the NCAA are more concerned with our middle school students and our ninth grade students. But what they're seeing, students coming out, they don't even have a 2.5 grade from average. And an average sport to get into a NCAA Division 1, Division 2, grade one actually is required. So a lot of kids that can get scholarship opportunities, but have not been awarded opportunities. Any other question? Yes.
So currently, right now, families are on the need, or they're just outside of the school? Like this is some of the current survival needs?
We don't have any here in school now. Our engine will only chart a little sign down. So we will be, you know, we're gonna have a meeting with Erie High. The whole goal there is to make sure that those students are transitioning into Erie School District, meaning all the schools, all that I mentioned of, and it's still onboard. And so we don't have a great deal of success in that. I'm trying. Whatever even works around here is working on the basis.
We have this on the agenda tonight.
We do, we do. So we are looking to pilot this here in this year. And eventually integrate it into a semester course, which would be our seminar classes. So that we're looking to, we do have it on the agenda for approval tonight to pilot it for the year.
What grade level would it be piloting? Pardon me? What grade level would it be piloting?
9th and 12th Erie.
And what they said, after the first year, Erie Insurance is certainly come onboard, Erie Community Foundation is already onboard, the D E I commission. And then some of my mentions, possibly come onboard. We're looking to, if Erie continues to use that first year, we're looking to actually create a foundation in which we help these kids go on to full secondary debt free. There's a lot of money out there, probably a little. A lot of people want to get it. I know we get it, actually seeing a product opportunity. Some, any other questions?
Cass, can you explain the, I'm looking at invoices that you put on the, that you sent over. And you indicate that for example, the collegiate academy pricing is $115,000, but you've got funding to cover that. And then you have pricing from for Erie High of $289,700, but all but $120,000 is covered by somebody. Can you explain where that fund is coming from?
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't want to let you carry that back.
We've got it written, right? You've got it written right on there.
But yeah, we have partnered with Sally Mae, the Gates Foundation, Microsoft, and some of the local areas. Which allows middle school district, and I don't expect the school district to spend three or four hundred thousand dollars a year on this product. We need teachers, for some, so we try to do this, partner with the community and businesses in the community to come in and help adapt school, offset that particular cost. And that's why we're gonna do the academy, free, I got theory, so it's a pivot. But we are meeting with other school districts, so we do have some addition funding to move the project in growth.
So I want to be clear that in your invoice, you say that the funding is coming from the Erie Community Foundation, Erie DEI Commission. You're now saying that the fund is coming from Sally Mae and others?
We can pull that funding if we need, so that's what we did. They went and reached the department, they just came along.
So for the total, the total for the school that should be $120,000?
Yes, it. And after the first year, they go to a late total. So it'd be no cost. I know Mr. Polio, you know, so it is going to be no cost to the school district. Because by that time, we would have four all partnerships. And some of the stuff that the platform does, that you all may not understand, we connect these schools to all local colleges, universities, career schools, military. And then we also building the portal, our other team is building the portal for all businesses. So we're gonna take these kids from kindergarten, once again, all the way to the workforce. And then they decide to leave us. They will be making hopefully a smart decision. Our job is not to tell a kid where to go, but to give that kid all the great information for that kid to make a sound decision. Right here, we have some kids that are going to university, they got $80,000 at home for communication degree, but they didn't get it. You know, it's just, they just not being given the proper guidance. That's one of the things that we have to spot. To that answer.
I just want to make it clear, the school district was only on the 120. And one item for one year.
One year, that's it. And it becomes absolutely free. The only thing you do require is that we, students use it. We can't give it, I can't put a program somewhere, then we check the status of the kids, they're not using. And that's what we need to do is make sure they do that. And approach it, Mr. Polio, Mr. McGowan, Mrs. Frey, have. That they want to, they want to use it. Plus, if you look at that invoice, you have our $40,000 and that's no cost either. If we were reporting to come into the school to meet with the kids, which is what we don't have to do. Now, it probably speeds them up a bit, maybe do that. Everyone's fully backed, double shot.
Thank you, Cass.
I'm swaying a little bit. Thank you, everybody.
And folks. I just want to say, like, I really, I would vouch for that because when I was here at this high school, Cass probably helped a lot of us. And he definitely was the reason I would get in school and stayed on. And there's tons of kids that I still refer to nowadays. It is working. And I mean, I got young people from collegiate and from Erie High who are benefiting and now going to school because of his work and diligence outside of following this, right? So I just think it's a great opportunity for our kids to have this access. But thank you.
Well, maybe.
Appreciate it. So item number three.
Yes, we, this is regarding what used to be our tech after hours program. That was grant funded through the Erie Community Foundation. And we ran an after school adult ed program at tech for a number of the different programs in the building. A couple of years ago, that already came to us and proposed that they take that over. We agreed because we wanted to focus more on our core mission of educating K-12 elementary students. And so we worked out a deal where they continued to operate it in our building with our teachers. And then we would bill ECAT for the cost, but they would administer the program. With the community college coming in, they they want to take over a couple of the programs. I think they approached Charlie at the first. And then we met earlier this summer. They would like to take over some machining and welding programs. And ECAT would like to continue on with the construction under a very similar arrangement that we had with ECAT. So the machining would still be at the Erie High for one more year. And then the welding, they want to move up to the Erie County Boat Tech. And eventually include the machining up there as well. So I had Jason and Pam work with the community college, we had to work out the specifics. And there's a memorandum of understanding here tonight detailing that. It again, basically just reimburses us for our costs, allows them to use our facilities and the teachers and reimburses us for the cost of the program. I didn't realize until this week that I didn't realize until this week that there is a, a deadline. This needs to be approved in August. Because the community college wants to start their semester with this program. So we have it ready to tee up tonight if you're in favor of voting for this and moving it forward. Uh if not, we have a couple of other options. We could schedule a special meeting a little later this month to do that. Or we could also, you know, if you're comfortable with the approach we put in place. We could uh move ahead with uh implementing it and prove it retro.
So if we were to approve it this evening, it would just be a uh motion to amend the agenda as we've done in the past when we get into the general session. Um and then have it added as supplemental. It will be reflected on the electronic agenda after the fact.
A little awkward for me. I just want to say this is the ECAT pushing this because we don't, it doesn't make a difference. My opinion is community college, they want to start soon.
The community colleges um semester would start on August twenty second, which we didn't realize until now. And of course, I'm fully conflicted in putting this together. And it did because we represent ECAT, Darius is on this board, and we represent the Erie County Community College. So we did receive corporate waivers from each prior to putting this together. Small community.
I, I know it's, it's pretty thick, but this is, you know, I, I look at policies like day in and day out. And I've got to say that I don't see anything that stands out to me as concern. Um I have, I have no problem with many days in a tonight. It looks maybe pretty standard. I'm like where it says as far as who's responsible for what and what district is responsible for. I don't, I don't see the issue.
This is the same process that we've used for tech after hours for the last few years. A lot of the language relative to the equipment use is governed by the terms of the Perkins brand, which purchased the equipment. So much of that is just better than mandated. And this is just ensuring that our partners are following those rules.
I do have a quick question about the reimbursement rates, et cetera. What, what defines there? What informs that?
The reimbursement rate is set at the current rate of pay for the individual employee. As on the basis of the collective bargaining agreement times thirteen point two percent for all the additional costs of employment. There's a sixty dollar an hour charge for an administrator to be in the building during the term of the, uh, at, at any point that a class is being. Plus twelve dollar reimbursement for the costs associated with the use of the facility per room. Which is the standard terms that we use in accordance with our facilities.
I believe that a few years ago based on our utility usage. Is everybody comfortable with this? And we met on the agenda tonight?
Okay, so Madam President, if that's the way that we're going to go, we start the meeting and we get to the front end of the agenda. At the beginning, uh we'll have to ask for a motion to amend the agenda to add this item. And as always, Mrs. Jones is very prepared for this.
And just to clarify, so do I vote on the motion to amend, but then not vote on the motion?
Uh I would, I would recommend that both you and Dr. Tate abstain from both motions.
Okay, thank you.
And we need five votes for this. We, we need five votes. We have five. If everybody but the conflicted board members vote yes.
Yes, if they vote five, oh yes, we'd be doing thank you, missing my count.
So I would make that motion that one point here after one point of four on the, whatever you're suggesting.
Yes, before or after, but prior to two.
Okay. So then we're going on to Teresa.
Okay, thank you. So this is exciting news. Um we are, Dr. Tate put us in contact with Rebecca Walker from the community college back in February. And Karen, Sherry, Rick Schneider and Nora Gilak have worked with the community college. Um through spring and the summer to create an opportunity for our students um in high school. So what we are looking at, and it's this document in front of you. Is we are going to be able to offer our incoming juniors, our first cohort, um a dual degree. Uh program where they will spend half of their day at high school and half of their day at the community college. And when they graduate with us, they will earn their high school diploma and associate's degree. Um we will, if you take a look, the semester, one fall gives you an idea of what the kids will experience. They'll come to us in the morning, we'll provide them lunch, transportation out um to Erie Community College, transportation back. Um and also uh they will be able to utilize those credits at Penn West. So if they choose to continue their education, Penn West will accept um these credits. So they will be two years into earning their bachelor's degree. Um so we're very excited about it. It was a little bit of a quick turnaround. We've had about five weeks to get this first cohort going. But um we also are working on a communication plan for students as they move up nine to ten graders. That they will have this opportunity as well. So we're really excited to, to get this off the ground.
How many slots are there?
There are twenty slots right now. Right now, we have eight students. And we had to try, we're communicating obviously during the summer, so we have to get them in. They have to do their placement testing. So we're, we still have until the seventeenth, I believe, to get more folks on. So our counselors and administrators are reaching out again.
And this is open to both collegiate and Erie students?
Yes.
And do we have applicants from both?
Yes, yes.
Any questions? We're transporting them and the West gets it. So not going down to them.
Correct. Excited, very excited.
Madam President, if I may, um, I'm correct, there's not an agenda item to approve this, correct? There's just, it's just a, a notice report. Wanted to make sure for Dr. Tate so she didn't have to abstain.
Thank you, uh, Teresa. Okay, so. Oh, yeah. Um so just an update with our pre-K and English learner program. Um again, we've been reevaluating where things fall in our organizational chart. Um and I think when we were consolidating, one of the things that happened was EL and pre-K. Fell under our special education department, pretty much like, like other, most other things. So um what we've done is as we've evaluated that, we have separated that out from the special education department. They will continue to handle early intervention. We will handle on the educational services and student services side, pre-K and EL. Um Karen Ryan has been um working with Sherry evaluating these programs from probably the end of May. And um has been making progress, getting to the root of some things. And also will be welcoming uh Mimi Fiorelli, Michelle Fiorelli on board, hopefully after you're approved tonight. And Karen just has a few updates for you that um we think will be helpful in these forward.
Sure. So thank you very much for allowing me to share some updates. Uh I just wanted to give everyone kind of where we are as far as. Where pre-K counts grant statements. Um you can see on the slide where the, the district sites are and also our partner sites. Um this slide really shows, we have a hundred and ninety-five full day slots right now. You can see what the block for childhood is, it's a hundred and a half a dollar a lot. And then we have thirty-two capacity slots. There are five hundred dollar allotment. And you can see uh where this lot are falling within our school district. Um and also our partner sites. Um we have the partner sites, that's part of our pre-K count. Right is an important part of collaboration uh in the grant application. And we have really great relationships with patients that we actually am wanting to get. In addition to the slot that you can see on the screen, we run our classrooms generally full at twenty. Um so we're able to have additional students going, but our funding remains consistent with, with the pre-K grant funding.
So Karen, you, we don't turn anybody away because we don't have a slot, right? The, the district.
No, we, we, we have so many slots. Our classroom lineup can't be more than one. So there does become a point in time where we do, and I'll get to that in our collaboration. Maybe just the, um, this spring, we met and took input with us. Um to begin to collaborate with the child development centers because they also have head start and pre-K spot. Um and when we are full, we want to refer our students to the child development centers. So that they can also be full. They're not at this point filling their spots. So we want to make sure we're increasing pre-K program in relativity of Erie, making sure that all students that want to qualify for these programs come out. So our, our twenty-two, twenty-three goal is we want to get, um, meeting and everyone's attention are into uh programs. We have great resources and part of folks from um the state that are willing to help for transition. And then really get to know and understand the role of responsibility. Um really want to strengthen our community partnerships. We know that as we work together in our community and be able to serve our families and our cities more. Wanting to be starting our engagement. We know if this very young age parents are ready, they're willing. We really want to get them um into our business and understanding and being fully involved with Erie County School. You know, for the trans person. Um some really large, we want to provide consistency back to the pre-K teacher. Um there is generally one baby to pre-K teachers in a pool. Um and we really want to make sure that we can do the training so that she can support those pre-K teacher. And then also um help the principals and everyone really understand what the best practice of pre-K classrooms should look like at now. Like so that, you know, we're always in that cycle of continuing. We're going to continue to review and revise for the future life pre-K procedures. Just really making sure that um we're working efficiently and effectively. Um and, and, and communicating out what those procedures are to our stakeholders. Uh and this year is a huge year because this is the last year of our continuation rate. So this year we have to apply our competitive pre-K program, which allows us to perhaps ask for a digital um pre-K spot within our program. But that is going to be a really big one this year as we move on. So our EL update. Out of the spread of twenty twenty-two, these are the number of students that we were serving in, in the program. So you can see the pre-K of higher class, we have possibly a hundred and fifteen students. Six to eight, about two hundred and sixty-four, and then about four hundred and four. And just on the other side of the screen, you can see um the tongue languages, although we have other languages. But these are, are the languages that are spoken the most frequently in our district. Um I, I wanted to share with you one, Sunday, July thirty-first. Um we were able to gather uh members of our academic community together. Um as part of uh the refugee impact grant, there's a special um. Kind of supplemental grant to the folks. And our goal was really to bring together members of the community to hear from them. What they felt their families needed, what they felt their students needed. Um and it was an amazing experience they were here from. Uh nine until I said, you know, that wrapped up the month. Um so the fathers, and you can see they're all fathers they gave um for this initial game. Um one of our cultural navigator, Wally and Hula, he was a weird possibility for me. We had um many guided questions and got feedback from all of the different groups that he thought. My really like badly took together, you know, chart and then on time to get every new grant gathered. But we were able to find out from the families what they felt would be most, you know, important to that. And we got enough of the moral lessons, really, and some things that are written before and on like are uh. The male owners really want to see the license. They want to learn to drive off. They love to work for the school district and some of the various programs that we have available. So it was, it was really great to hear again what they felt both needed. Um we're hoping to have gatherings for women. They don't culturally meet together. Um and so these were just some of the things that, you know, the, the women did send, you know, sort of scoop the passion. They're very interested in being part of mom groups in Erie. Um so, you know, we're kind of work to start to tighten the facility, some of that. I can lay an attitude in a new country and spread out all over with shock me when the folks came together in this room. Right, was that many of them had never met with us? And I even say there, there was a lot of them wanting to join more frequently um to meet and get friends. So it was just an amazing opportunity to see that if we provide this thing. If, if we make those comfortable, they will come. And so, you know, one of our goals moving forward is to continue to raise together our population and some folks. That maybe don't feel comfortable yet, having to come to another setting. Because we found that when we have the right setting, are, are the libraries. Um so just some goals for twenty-two, twenty-three. Again, Michelle pointed these hands as Megan to um this room. It is very hard to learn for sure. We want to continue to strengthen community partnership. We have a lot of great organizations in Erie that support um our English language learners. And really want to make sure that we have to pay collaboration. Because we want to make sure that everyone is able to leverage the support that we have without due location purpose. That's just not, not what I should put our opinion on. We want to increase family engagement. Again, you know, and I'm sure you all talk about how important it is to get people here. And, and not here necessarily, but with us. Um so that we can learn from that and learn what they need and promise to support them. Know that the video that we want to continue to increase family engagement. Um Sherry, I had a lot of conversation about leveraging student services to meet the needs of students and families. Uh we have some cultural navigator higher than our district that provides translation. Um and, and, you know, some of the things that we are really not. Necessarily trained in some of the student support services. So how do we get the partnership, you know, cultural navigators and our families, so that they can access um. The services that again, even community schools, you know, I'm hearing my African folks telling me that they need. And winter cold is very cold in Erie, they tell me, and they have no idea that they can access some support in our schools. So really just again, getting the right people around the people who are available. Um again, we need a way to provide consistent feedback for EL teachers. And all of our teachers in this district are working with language development. By getting into the classrooms again and seeing what's going on, we'll be able to, like, spread our professional learning. They're very specific. They have support language development, we need to make sure we're going to start it. Um again, supporting early leaders to strengthen and getting people to strengthen without that practice. And again, to continue to review and revise for district-wide EL procedures. There's a lot of um mandates with data tracking that we really need to be, you know, careful to make sure that it's accurate. And being reported on that. So.
Did you find this group to invite, did you use a community partner? Did you help us through the schools? I'm just curious.
Sure. So um the, the initial group, they, they act as a, for part of the M T N supplemental grant. Um and so Wally and Hula is the cultural navigator. So really I heard from him today, you know, here the family's on a case load and we go get in contact and um. Get someone we spoke to the table, I guess. it's wonderful that we have received a supplemental grant to support the African families. But it felt very, um, wrong going to be to try and write in there for things that they need without us.
Thanks, Karen. Let's take a few second breaks. You'll be in the agenda for tonight, because we do have an executive session.
It's one.
Okay. Here, here, the agenda. That's good. That's great to me. All right. Any other matters? Okay, so we'll adjourn this meeting, um, so we can go into an executive session.